I'm ready. Good evening. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Most Uncle Amelia Boyd, Ben McGrann, and Wayne Benner. Commissioner Slate Camp is absent this evening. If everyone will please stand, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any general announcements from Commissioners?
Nope.
From staff?
Uh, two announcements. The first is that your uh, November 21st meeting is canceled. And the second is regarding the open houses on the comprehensive plan on November 29th and December 7th, and those will both be here in council chambers from 5 to 7.
And would you give us just a little more detail on the format? It is an open house. Is there a formal presentation or is it just?
No, what we'll have is the table set up with all the chapters. Um, and then we'll have staff or Commissioners or council members at the tables to answer questions.
Gotcha. And, and take public comment?
Right. And, and it is also on the conveyor site as well.
Okay.
Um, there's an opportunity to get it in the document. I actually comment in the document like we did previously.
Gotcha. Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Uh, the first item on tonight's agenda is approval of meetings, and I need to note that the agenda states the meetings are from October 4th, but in reality, that meeting was held on October 3rd, which is correctly stated on the minutes themselves. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 3rd, 2023 regular meeting.
To move.
Thank you. Second. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. The next item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on proposed zoning code amendment, city application number P O A 23-0001. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on October 17th, 2023. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing, as this is a hearing on proposed code language. Explanation of the subject of the hearing by city staff, then opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. We will then close the public hearing and the Commissioners will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed with questions directed only to city staff during the deliberation. For the record, any written comments received were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to the commission. I appreciate your continued patience as we work through all of this information and notes for the record. And at this time, I would like to ask for your specific attention as I recite the city's general rules for participation during public meetings. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comment only. Do not direct any questions to the commission or the staff and do not approach the dais. Also, now that the meeting is underway, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front tables as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff in the back of the room who can provide assistance if needed. Remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any single member. The person speaking shall face and address only the commission and shall not turn and address staff or members of the audience. Members of the public are asked to please exercise self-control, to participate in our meeting in an orderly manner, and to focus on the specifics, the specific issue at hand and avoid personalizing debate. Those speaking shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the commission, staff, or public. Disorderly or boisterous conduct, including loud, threatening, or abusive language, whistling, speaking out of turn, clapping, or other similar acts which disturb or disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, is not allowed. I will now yield the Florida City Planner Amy Tweeton for an introduction of the proposed code amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, this is a hearing after numerous months of work by the commission um, to work through details of changes for accessory structures. Uh, the hearing's been scheduled to hear testimony on proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code related to accessory structures that include garages, carport sheds, and accessory dwelling units. Uh, and it covers section 913 definitions, 915 accessory buildings, 918 accessory dwelling units, 941 residential, single-family, 942 multifamily zoning. Uh, the changes that have been discussed for the past several months um, are based on a few factors or how we got to this point. Uh, this, the, the issue of conflicts in the code related to accessory structures was actually talked about back in May of 2022. Um, and then as we were going through the comprehensive plan update, we, uh, based on the feedback we were getting, we felt there was a need for a special outreach on housing and neighborhoods, so we did an additional workshop on housing and neighborhoods, and that followed by a survey on the same subject in late 2022. Uh, and then the subject of accessory dwelling units was brought up again uh, at the open house on the draft document in April of 23. In addition, in late fall of 22, uh, city council had requested uh, the commission to revise the code um, to change the number of bedrooms. Currently, we allow 900 square feet and one bedroom. So I wanted to give a little bit of history regarding the code and accessory dwelling units in particular, but accessory structures more broadly. Uh, in 2017, there was an ordinance 1346 that amended the code related to accessory dwellings. And that code, uh, the maximum size was 650 square feet, one bedroom, and a maximum 26 feet in height in the RS Single Family zoning district. There was no limit stated in the residential multifamily district. Uh, that ordinance also required that attached ADUs uh, had designed exterior finished material same or visually matching the principal dwelling that they are being attached to, but there was no language about detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, the placement of detached ADUs uh, was six feet behind the primary dwelling. Um, and again, this was an issue that we've discussed that when you say behind, what does that actually mean? And then side and rear yard setbacks um, under this ordinance were established at 10 feet. If you were on an alley, your rear yard setback could be five feet. Then in 2021, there was another ordinance that uh, was brought to city council uh, that made changes to 915 accessory buildings and 918 accessory dwelling units. And I will note that these changes did not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, these went directly to council and because they were under the general provisions, um, it was determined that a public hearing was not required. So under this ordinance, the size of ADUs was increased to 900 square feet and one bedroom. There was a additional requirement put in that an ADU had to be site-built. Uh, the placement of ADUs, they got rid of the dimension, but it still said it had to be behind the primary dwelling. Uh, setbacks were changed from 10 feet to five feet on the rear and the side. Uh, and the height limit was removed, which reverted um, all accessory structures to the underlying zoning district allowances, which in the uh, single family is 35 feet, in the multiple family is 40 feet. And I just bring this, these changes up because there have been changes, and this was part of the issue we were having early on is because when you make a change to one part of the code, if you don't make sure you're addressing all parts of the code, we were starting to have conflicts on if someone called something a garage, it had a different requirement than an accessory building. So that is where the cleanup um, back in May of 2022 started. So.
Quick, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Amy, real quick, just thanks for the trip down memory lane. I didn't know half of that. Um, which is sort of interesting. The, why did the city council kick it back to look at the bedrooms? Why'd they kick that back to planning and zoning?
Uh, because they felt the planning commission should weigh in on it.
Based on what? Was there?
Because generally zoning ordinance changes started the planning commission.
Oh, I got you, but there wasn't anything specific to bedroom shenanigans? Like, was it, was it like too many in 900? Like, what was the sort of thought that brought that back?
No, I think, and again, back to the one in 2021, these changes were all put in place.
By city council, not having gone through planning and zoning. Yet they kicked it back to planning and zoning to fix up something around the bit situations. If you go back a couple slides, maybe I missed something.
Could I maybe just?
Yeah.
Um, wait till we get through.
Okay.
And then.
Sorry.
All right, so the changes before you, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Um, first relocation of detached accessory structure language and removal of conflicting language in the RS and RM zoning district standards. Again, when we started this whole process, that's really what we were trying to accomplish. Uh, for all accessory structures, uh, we have a requirement that the, they are placed in the rear yard, that the side and rear yard setbacks are the same as the principal structure, which is five feet with a two-foot eve allowance. Street-facing vehicle entrance must be 25 feet from the property line. Corner lot accessory structure must be setback five feet from the secondary street-facing principal structure wall. Maximum height of one and a half times the principal structure or 26 feet, whichever is less. Change of use is allowed, but it must meet the setback and ADU requirements if converted to an ADU. For ADUs, the changes are a reduction of size to 700 square feet for single-story ADUs and two-story ADUs, a maximum of 75% of the area of the principal structure or 700 square feet, whichever is less, and no bedroom requirement. Uh, there's a design compatibility criteria for all accessory dwelling units, and there is an allowance for modular and manufactured structures with, with certain provisions. And again, that was getting at the concern about affordability and part of the reason for allowing accessory dwelling units. So a few graphics, just to clarify, when I say rear yard, what that means. The rear yard is behind the principal structure, so a rear yard is not a side yard, it's not to the side of the building, it is from the back wall of the principal structure to the rear property line. And this is the illustration. Uh, and again, this 20, this requirement for 25-foot setback, if you have a vehicle entrance, is not new. Uh, what is new is so what this is showing is if you have an detached accessory garage um, and it's fate, you're on a corner and you're facing a street where the vehicle entrance, that has to be setback 25 feet. And that is to allow for you to park a car in front of your garage and not block the sidewalk. And then we have the requirement for um, if you look at 123 Street B up in the upper right corner, the front of this house is on Street B. So the ADU is in its rear yard because the rear yard is behind the principal structure. Um, but because it is on a corner lot, it is two frontages. So on the secondary frontage, the ADU is required to be setback a minimum of five feet. So I'll just briefly go through all, all the changes. Um, again, we're adding some definitions to the code and we're changing the definition uh, of private garage. Uh, this highlights are new, but some of the language that is highlighted as yellow actually comes from other parts of the codes that we are striking in other sections. Uh, but a lot of this is cleaning up, making sure we're consistent using the term structure instead of going between structure, building, um, and other terminology. Um, it's clarifying the setback of five feet with an eve allowance of two feet. Um, that just clarifying that accessory structures account, count toward total lot coverage. Again, the rear yard of this, the um, in the rear yard is where an accessory structure can be placed. There's the five-foot setback from the secondary street front and the 25-foot from, for a vehicle entrance facing a street. Uh, again, the height reduction um, is the, or the height, proposed height limit is one and a half times the principal structure or 26 feet, whichever is less uh, than allowance for changing use if you're compliant with uh, accessory structure and ADU requirements. So these are all very similar to what we currently have, except for um, the J, under J, second paragraph is talking about allowing, if you're an existing non-conforming accessory uh, structure that can't meet the five-foot setback on a secondary street, um, there are ways that it can be considered. So that is J, second paragraph. Uh, this, again, much of the existing language stays, it's just cleaning up, talking about structures, dwellings, or buildings. Uh, this again is the change in area. There is no bedroom limitation, but the maximum area is 700 square feet. And this is the new design compatibility for all the ADUs rather than just attached ADUs. Um, and I'll have Heather go into this with, in a little more detail. Um, and then B, the red highlight is at the last uh, meeting, the direction of the commission was to consider allowing windows other than glass block if you have a two-story ADU that is at the five-foot setback. We added, there, there was a desire to allow usable windows instead of just glass block. So this is the language that I came up with. Second-story ADUs placed at the minimum setback shall be required to utilize privacy windows facing a budding lots such as glass block opaque or transom-type windows placed no less than six feet above the floor. So again, if you have it, it's up high, so it's allowing it light, but it's not, uh, you're not looking down on the neighboring property. Uh, attached ADUs, a lot of this language is uh, the same. Uh, this is where detached ADUs, we have added uh, modular prefabricated dwellings constructed in a HUD-approved facility within the past 12 months. And then going through this, this um, again, is just trying to clean up um, in the RS and RM districts. Uh, if it's a detached structure, you go back to 915 and 918. Instead of having a different regulation, slightly different wording, um, because this is where a lot of confusion was created. So just going on, um, this is um, a lot of this language, again, that's stricken under four, is actually relocated to um, 915 or 918. We just didn't want to repeat it here. And this is a similar situation where the design requirements are stated up in 915 and 918. So with, that's the overview. Um, I guess before I turn it over to Heather, um, if the commission has any questions on the changes at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the, um, the 75% second floor, and again, kind of like what that looks like. I think it seems like, you know, if you have a garage with a footprint, going straight up from that seems to make most sense, but we're saying that that has to be 75% smaller than the.
It, if you recall that, that my first try at this, given the direction of the commission, was 75% of the accessory structure. But then we went from, we went with the language from Court Lane, and it's, if it's a two-story, if it's a second-story accessory dwelling, it can't be more than 75% of the area of the principal structure not to exceed 700 square feet. So potentially, it could be the same footprint as the first floor. It just really, it's, it's trying to make it related to the principal structure.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And if I recall, Amy, there was um, examples of that throughout the city of the footprint on the first story was bigger than the ADU on top.
Right.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Okay. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Heather.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you guys hear me okay?
Oh, you're not.
Okay, I had to put my coat on because it's just a little chilly in here. So I'm going to take you through the journey of um, how we got started uh, working together on the um, idea of compatibility. So let me just go ahead and, excuse me, pull this up here. There we go. Okay. So, how we got here? As you all recall, the original discussion started with trying to define what compatibility meant. And I think that's a really important thing to, to really hone on on because I think clarity is the most important thing that um, we all are looking for here at the city and the community is looking for too. And the beauty about what um, the proposal is putting forth is that you've come up with the compatibility of what it needs to be to the primary, but there's this wonderful additional opportunity that residents can take advantage of, which is being able to celebrate our residential community character, our heritage here in Sandpoint. And so the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, upon your request, went down the rabbit hole of trying to understand compatibility. They spent so many um, hours walking the streets, analyzing ADUs, looking at all of the historic surveys that have been done in our community. And they landed on these five key characteristics that celebrate so much of what is our residential historic character, but these are also affordable, functional and moments. So want to take you through this journey here. So um, the bungalow, the bungalow is the most enduring style in the city of Sandpoint. And it's the foundation of most all housing styles, and that spans from the 1900s until today. And you actually can see that we have a house from the turn of the century, and then we have a newly built house. And you can see where those key elements are. And again, basic foundation elements to building with front-facing windows, you have the roof, and then this particular style, which we'll get into, um, the porch. All of these things still exist because they were so brilliantly done. And why do you want to reinvent the wheel? It makes sense to the condition of the elements, the environment stylistically, and it's still very, very expressive. Um, you can see here, uh, we had a fun trend that came into the 1970s. Uh, let's call it a modified gable. And we have it, this is just one example of it with um, condo del Sol. So um, we're seeing a lot of kind of that fun 70s vibe come back in um, current trends and um, and again, the characteristics um, fit within those new styles. Um, some of the concerns that my commission um, has heard from the community um, would be the, some of the new styles that are um, coming up into uh, our residential areas that sit right next to um, our, our historic buildings and when, and in even our new um, builds such as the um, craftsman style. And um, there's so many different things to consider, but one of the things about um, not upholding our residential character, again, that started from the turn of the century until today, um, we are at risk of that all being eradicated with um, a great new trend coming in that may not fit what the community is looking for, for their residential character. Um, the community has certainly spoken and their responses have been documented. And it's reflected in our adopted 2009 um, comprehensive plan that we've been um, working off of. And it is absolutely in the adopted Arts, Culture, and Historic Master Plan, which was adopted in 2021, about making sure that we are um, preserving and educating and advocating um, for our community character and our residential character as well. Um, and these aren't just superficial stylistic moments. Um, this is a great example of the power of um, having the portago, the front porch, the trellis right there. It really helps break up the verticality, but it also is for the safety of the individual coming in and the comfort of getting out of the rain, the snow load. Same with eaves and same with, you know, the type of gables with hips uh, and gable roof styles. It's, it's all about function and also making sure that you're preserving that house for longevity of time. And, and this quote was just really powerful to me. Um, there may have been a time when preservation was about saving an old building here and there, but those days are gone. Preservation is in the business of saving communities and the values they embody. And I, I really, this quote resonates with me, especially when I hear our community saying we need to preserve our community character and save it. And um, that voice is really strong and resonates with me. And I, I am so thankful that we have that voice represented in our comprehensive plan from 2009. It's also talked about in hopefully the upcoming comprehensive plan, and we certainly have that in the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Master Plan as well, which is adopted. And so I'm celebrating the fact that all of you are here considering actually doing the work of, of making it happen in terms of celebrating and preserving our character by having it reflected in our code. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, and that's all I have to say about style.
Commissioners, any questions at this time?
Oh, one question.
Okay.
Has that, uh, has the um, uh, lookbook, for lack of a better term, been publicly available? Is it out there for folks yet, or is it still? I know that we, we saw a draft of it.
Yes, Grant, I'm so, um, can I share that?
Oh, sure.
Excuse me, Commissioner Simmons. I'm so excited that you mentioned that because the Historic Preservation Commission has been doing um, so much uh, great work on education, advocacy, and awareness of um, our historic character. And um, they're working on pattern books, and in fact.
Pattern book.
Pattern book. The, the commission has completed the first um, pattern book, and I just want to go ahead and pull it up here. Um.
It's fantastic. Heather.
Thank you so much. And so we're also going to be working on. Thank you so much. And so we're also going to be working on, um, style guides as well. And this is just a journey that it takes you through understanding the history of the bungalow in Sandpoint. And, um, excuse me, I have, let me pull up a different version. There we go. Excuse me, this is the final version. I don't want to show you the non-complete. So, um. To really inspire individuals that own a bungalow and educate them about. The beauty of their home and the soul of their home, but it also will encourage. You know, people to understand the value of that style and how classic it is and how it endures all the decades and ages of time. Um, and so we, uh, at the Historic Preservation Commission are all about education and advocacy. Um, and encouragement, um, because you know, once something is gone, especially when it's made out of historic materials. It's hard to reproduce it. And, and so it's, it's wonderful to be able to preserve that. But again, the five characteristics are elements that are not hard to achieve and they're not. Um, very expensive to implement as well. And we always say, once you see it, you can't unsee it. So, uh, it's fun to think about the bungalow being all of the, the different characteristic styles throughout Sandpoint. Um, whether it's a Dutch colonial, whatever it's possible, and I could go on and on about that. Um, so again, we have the pattern books and we're going to be doing them for different. Um, vernacular, historic vernaculars, and then we also are going to be developing style guides and talking about the details too of. Character elements. So, um, the community is going to have so many wonderful resources that they'll have access to. Currently, the pattern book is on our website at sandpointidaho.gov and there's links to it. Um, I have hard copies here at the city, so thank you so much for mentioning that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Boyd.
Heather, I really like the hybrid variations because when you think of a bungalow, you know, some of us may just have one in particular. Style and it's so nice because with the different styles, now it's not going to be like cookie cutter bungalows throughout the city. It's going to be, you know, the options. It's, it's fantastic what, what you guys put together. It's exciting to see. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, so after holding the public hearing. Uh, and deliberation, commission may give direction on further changes. Or make a recommendation regarding the changes to city council. Uh, in deliberation, commission must determine if the changes are in accordance with the adopted two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. You will see in the staff report, I did give you goals and policies from the current plan as well as goals and objectives. Of the final draft. Uh, I think when we. Started getting close to public hearing on this, the thought was we would have an adopted plan, but we do not have that yet. So we have to rely on the two thousand and nine. So, uh, with that. I'm happy to answer any questions before you open the hearing.
Any questions at this point? Okay, well then we will now proceed to the public hearing. Uh, if you are participating on Zoom, and let me ask, do we have people on Zoom?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Uh, if you are participating in Zoom and wish to speak, you will need a working microphone on your phone, phone or computer. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking if you would like to unmute. And you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. As announced earlier, those here in chambers who would like to speak will need to complete a signup form. Available on the table by the door where you entered and hand it to staff. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during the public hearing. I will allow this option this evening. If you are present here in the room and would like to gift your time to someone else who is also present here in the room, you may do so. The person gifting their time may do so only once and the person receiving gifted time may only receive one gift. For a total time of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you approach the dais. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first person to testify?
Uh, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak, could you please raise your hand at this time? Aaron Qualls.
Hello, can you hear me?
Again, thank you.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, well, first, uh, I, I guess I, I'd love to point out, uh, that this is. This is a legislative hearing, not a quasi judicial one and. Uh, as such, you, you're encouraged to, uh, you know, this is what I tell planning commissioners and city council members across the region who I work with, but. Um, you can't have back and forth dialogue and there can be new information. It's important to follow very rigid rules for quasi judicial public hearings, but when it's a legislative issue, one that affects everybody. Um, there's a lot more, uh, opportunity for back and forth. And time limits are usually reserved for standing room only. And now with only, uh, um, a couple of minutes left, um, I will go into the meat of the issue if I may. And I would encourage you to hold off on these changes, uh, for a few reasons. I think you should really consult the construction industry and the design industry. Um, and the lending industry. Um, I think you should further explore other examples from other like cities in Idaho and in the region and beyond. And I think you should wait until your comprehensive plan is adopted. And the comprehensive plan certainly does have goals and policies. And it also has a specific, uh, little paragraph on page fifty-five about accessory dwelling units. And it says an infill housing type that has been successful is accessory dwelling unit. Uh, since two thousand seventeen, they've been allowed by right in all residential zones. And sixty have been constructed through two thousand and twenty-two. Most of these units have been created in two-story detached garages, which helps with neighborhood concerns about increased need for parking when additional units are created. The size allowance was increased to nine hundred square feet in two thousand and twenty-one with a single bedroom. An additional code and policy revision could further encourage the creation of these relatively affordable to build units. Uh, that's the draft plan this body recommended and, um, looking at, uh, a lot of these changes, I don't see. That it's really encouraging the creation of, of them. Uh, one, uh, specific, uh, e- example or a concern is the square footage limitation. Cordelane, by the way, allows, uh, ADUs to go up to eight hundred square feet and they do not have very, uh, rigid design standards. And when we did an analysis, uh, years ago, eight hundred square feet was about the average and it's been trending more. Um, higher and based, and by the way, that's conditioned space, uh, that doesn't include non-conditioned space. Um, I applaud some design standards, but keep it simple if you would. Limit the height to twenty-six feet like it was. Maybe encourage, uh, eaves or require eaves. Maybe, uh, limit the use of metal siding to one story, for example, and require a bellyband to break something up. But these are very important, uh, infill opportunity that houses our workforce and, uh, it's. If you want to retain community, I would really encourage you to hold off and. And reconsider the size limitation and other limitations that would make these very difficult, uh, to build. They're very difficult to finance. Uh, it's not.
The time is up, Mr. Qualls, the time is up, but thank you for participating.
Thank you, John. This is your meeting.
Thank you.
And for the record, could you please state if you're a resident within city limits?
I am a resident.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
If there are any other participants on Zoom who would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Here, we'll proceed to those in the room.
And I will mention as we get ready to do that, if there's anybody in the room who wants to speak and hasn't filled out a form. They are available back there and you can give them to the staff at the back table. Thank you. Proceed.
Luke Amet.
Before I begin, I would like to be gifted time from my father, if that is all right.
It is.
Super duper.
You give me a second, I'll restart it.
Yes, ma'am.
That the first time he's giving you extra time to speak or?
Taking a lot of his time, well, since last night. All right. Luke Amet, city resident, recovering planning and zoning commissioner of this body. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this issue. And I appreciate the comments that were made by planner Qualls. I have some. Hesitations as I look at this proposed ordinance. Community character starts with people. The preservation of our workforce. Prior to my current job, I was a teacher. And our kids cannot afford to live here. I live in a historic home. And historic is romantic right until you are underneath, looking at all of that history, trying to fix the plumbing. That home that I bought in two thousand and eleven. In comparison to the ADU that I have designed, that I am now prepared to submit to the city with these new design standards. Will cost less for my twenty-five hundred square foot home. Than the eight hundred and seventy-five square foot ADU that I am attempting to build. My wife, who is a second generation. City employee and I are blessed. My dad's here, so to live with two sets of parents. Within six miles. We are growing older. Our parents are growing older. We would like to build an ADU for. The realities of time. As we look across our workforce, our workforce cannot afford to move here. The genesis of the two-bedroom conversation started with me as I was looking at. The county ordinance, which is nine hundred square feet and two bedrooms, but yet this proposal. Where we're looking at infill opportunities is to reduce. The square footage from nine hundred to seven hundred square feet, but you're eliminating the bedrooms. That is odd, so you are reducing the square footage by twenty-two percent, but you are eliminating the provision. For bedrooms. A one-size-fits-all solution does not work in a city, a county, a state. Or a country with individual liberties. For example, I am fortunate to have a large city lot. I have a twenty-five hundred square foot home. I would like to have a nine hundred square foot ADU in my backyard. That I have designed actually with an exceeding number of those design features. But the draconian nature of this proposed ordinance would eliminate my opportunity to do so. As a high school teacher, I can tell you that our workforce with Idaho wages are not able to afford to live here. One of the reasons why I proposed that two bedrooms with nine hundred square feet. Is that a young, starting off family would be able to have their own room. And their ankle biters would also be able to have their own room. Seven hundred square feet, how many closets slash bedrooms are you going to put into that footprint? The goal of the current two thousand and nine existing comprehensive plan discusses housing variety. I believe that some of these proposals are not housing varie- variety, but could better be described as NIMBY. And not in my backyard. I have actually designed and we have hired an architect where our ADU that we have would be nicer than our house in front. And that is on purpose. So then as we work to reconstruct our home in front. We would actually have a place to live and we would have built as we deal with the romantic elements of a nineteen eighteen home. Which also happens to be across the street from my grandmother's house. So the historic preservation is something that is very important. Much of our current heritage is watching the members of this community being unable to afford housing. Reducing the size of the footprint from seven to nine hundred square feet screams of elitism. And it does not scream of affordable housing or looking to actually. Through the market forces of supply and demand, increase supply. What it says is I don't get that option in my backyard. And my children don't have that option unless they want it within seven hundred square feet. The blessings of grandchildren, the blessings of parents, the blessings of private property are something to be celebrated. In regards to the, that new ADU that has caused so much consternation that was in the slide which is on. Uh, Cedar and Boyer. One man's castle is another man's hovel and I don't know that it is for me to say. Because one of the pieces that is not brought forward about that home is the energy efficiencies that are on that siding. Particularly, I don't find that home or that ADU to be that attractive and I look at it and I am quite curious about the way that the snow is going to fall. Because it's going to fall right in front of the garage doors. And I think about the way that my back is aging and I'm concerned. So I would ask that you table these conversations or come up with some ideas like variances. One size does not fit all. And there is room for this policy to be improved before being adopted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greg Flint.
Greg Flint. I've lived in the city ten years, in the county since ninety-one. Thank you. Okay, um. Some of you, I hope, will remember. When, uh, myself, my daughter Heather. John Gaddis and Reed Weber all offered input. Specifically regarding trees. And I would like to speak now, encouraging. What we offered before was for the comprehensive plan consideration. What I'd like to offer now is. For the code to include flexibility in design. Standards and placement of structures. When reasonable accommodations can preserve significant trees. For example, and I, I have submitted as an example, the situation where I live. Where we've designed, uh, where Reed designed a carport. That the city insists is a garage, it's a covered, covered by the second story. Of a, of a new duplex. And, uh. If. If it goes all the way. If it has to start twenty-five feet from the property line. Then it goes right into what is the central feature of the design of this. What we're trying to offer the owner, whom the owner really likes, is a huge triad of two to three hundred year old cedar trees. Now, all over town, there's garages that come right off the sidewalk that are grandfathered in. I think the city could grandfather in some two, three hundred year old cedar trees as well. So I would like that actually to be put in the code, not mandating the saving of trees. But where the people wish to do so, let there be some flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly O'Reilly.
I'm going to talk fast. Molly O'Reilly, city resident. Um, accessory dwelling has been replaced by accessory building and I live in a house. Amy? Photo, um, didn't work. Where I have a stucco, uh, Foswell-built house in two thousand and twelve with. Um, stick-built garage and was a carport, now is an ADU, so I couldn't. Build that ADU today. And in fact, we couldn't have built the house. We couldn't have done an energy-efficient stucco house. It's one of three stucco houses within a, a block and a half that has a stick-built garage with a different. Different finish. So that's community culture, I guess, community. Anyway, the garage and the, um, ADU have a flat roof. The house next door to me has a flat roof. We have a bungalow gable. Um, so that wouldn't be legal either and the flat roofs were so we would get winter sun into the house. And the flat roofs were so we would get winter sun into the house. Keeping the garage low and with the the um ADU, the the lower the roof, the more I get sun in the veggie garden, which I contribute a lot to the food bank. So we wouldn't have built because my husband really liked working with um energy efficient, alternative ways of going about it. You had the hearing talked about incentives for long term ADU rentals and one story structures. There's no incentive in the proposed code. You've got great carrots. You can you can give up a little parking and get something. Yeah, you can do this and get that. Um you you've got some some capability there. And going following Aaron and also Luke um seven hundred feet. Talk to builders. See what the square foot cost is for seven hundred versus a nine hundred square foot, just simple bungalow. And um there's the um airstream carport from the veggie garden before it turned into an ADU. And you have creative people coming up with strictures. You must do this, this and this. Tell them what you want to accomplish. And that this is a toolkit and you may even have more tools. Um because I think that will that will produce a better result. And not seem as confining and people like Luke and me won't be saying, eh, I do this. We couldn't um, we couldn't do it. So um I had a couple more pictures. Are they gonna work?
We have ten seconds left on the clock.
We are just about out of time.
Okay, well, so much for that. All right. Please delay, rethink, do this better. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kyle Schreiber.
Hi there. Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. Um I'm also gonna try and talk fast. ADUs are a source of much needed affordable housing in our community. Uh and our current comp plan and a large majority of the respondents to the Housing and Neighborhood Survey said they want the city to encourage more ADUs throughout town. Um I'm concerned that these new restrictions are in opposition to that. Nine one five E and F will needlessly disqualify a number of homeowners from building ADUs that otherwise could be great assets to the community. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking eight oh three Church Street, eleven twenty one Cedar Street. I'm sure I could come up with more. Uh nine one five G forces our community to dedicate more land to bigger driveways and therefore less for plants and trees. Cars are often parked on the sidewalk regardless of how long the driveway is and cars can be parked inside a garage with a short driveway. Nine one eight B four reduces the size of ADUs. And encourages bigger principal structures. The Housing and Neighborhood Survey showed a strong preference toward building a mix of housing. And I believe that that's what our community needs. This new restriction will result in oversized housing and oversized principal houses and small ADUs, which are ultimately less suitable as long term residences. Uh nine one eight five uh B five imposes arbitrary preferences over actual utility and necessity. Uh one thing that makes Sandpoint charming is our eclectic diversity of our housing in our core neighborhoods. And I would absolutely welcome a butterfly roofed ADU, for example. Uh next to my house, but ultimately it's not my place to impose my preferences onto my neighbor. Uh nine one eight C. Again, I'm concerned these new regulations will add building costs without adding any discernible value. So please reconsider these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Curtis.
Hi, I'm Rich Curtis. I'm a resident in Sandpoint, Idaho. Been here since two thousand and five full time. Um yeah, I think you've done a lot of great work here and I know they put a lot of time into this, but I think we still have a few other things we have to kind of fine tune. I was a business owner. I owned a restaurant here in town that I created called Baxter's on Cedar. And one of the biggest problems we had was finding housing for employees. And one of the things I've spoke to Shelby about in numerous occasions were to relieve the square footage and the staircase, which they did. To increase the size of the ADU, which they did to nine hundred square feet, which I think should stay the same. But to allow two bedrooms. It's very tough for two individuals that work in a retail store or a restaurant that are on twenty dollar an hour jobs. Two individuals, guy, girl, 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 guy, guy, doesn't matter. They can each have their own bedroom at nine hundred dollars a month. And plus utilities and afford that. Most of them don't have cars. They walk or ride their bikes to work. Um but when you have to build an eight new ADU, which I just recently did. And a one story at eight hundred and sixty square feet. Cost me two hundred and seven thousand dollars and I haven't put the gutters on yet for another twelve hundred. I know exactly what they cost to build new today. And you can't rent something like that for less than sixteen hundred dollars a month just to break even. So if we, you know, are gonna try to help private sector and help create housing in this community, and I've got other apartments which I rent as well. You know, we have to be able to have good incentives for us to do that. And to build supply affordable housing for those that aren't as fortunate and don't have the jobs that pay the bigger salaries. I also have um a situation where I want to do a uh an ADU on a corner lot where I live, I reside. But that twenty five foot setback from the side road on a fifty foot lot with a five foot setback on the other side. It's gonna create a very, very small ADU that there it doesn't even make sense for me to try to do that. I think that setback has to be relooked at and have it a maximum fifteen feet, if not ten, when you're on a corner lot because you shouldn't be um at a disadvantage because you live on a corner lot when you're still trying to provide you know, alternative housing for our community. And um so I think before we rush into this, and I know you've done a lot of work um planning and zoning. I appreciate these guys. They do a great job and they're probably tired of me, but um they're great at what they do and are staying late um and trying to get it right. So I just would like you to reconsider that as we're going into probably a new mayor for sure and so maybe some new council people. Let's get everybody up to speed and put a little more effort into this before we make our final decisions. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Woody Sherwood.
Thank you. Pardon me, I start speaking too soon. Uh thank you for uh taking my comments here for a moment and stuff. It's been kind of exciting uh and part of this historical preservation committee. We haven't worked on the code part of this so much. We have, how do we try and figure out how to keep our community? Both in what we want it to be in terms of how it presents itself and how does it accommodate the people as part of it. And so I think maybe that there's some good comments that have come up tonight. Think maybe a little more work needs to be done. But I also think that unless you want to dive into it a little deeper and get into design review processes and stuff like that, that you're gonna have to put some stuff in the code that gives the staff some people and and the other people the ability to look at something and say, it's just not a fair situation. And uh so I really, I really think that what Heather's come up with the design pattern books and what we're trying to do here does make some sense to try and keep some ca- some of the chaos out of the system. I'm also definitely sympathetic with the part of uh we have to keep some affordability into it. We have to keep some stuff. So I'm not saying exactly that I'm one way or another on this. I'm just saying those are some of my thoughts on this and you know, it's um there's kind of thing that goes on about private property rights and I get private property rights completely, but I also understand that there's no trailer hitch on the hearse. And we are the caretakers of property. We're not the owners of property. We have a small period on this earth that we're here. And everything stays after us. And so it's up to us to get this right and do it right. And not just go like say fair because today we want to have cheap housing or tomorrow we want to have you know, some kind of design that does this or I want to do this. I want to do that. I think we're gonna have some common sense about this thing too. So finally, I'd like to see us really deal with the parking on this thing because while there's an occasional dishwasher that may not have a car, I can tell you most people. If there's two adults in a two bedroom home, there's gonna be two cars. They're gonna be part of that. We've already put parking regulation in for four months of the twelve month year that you can park on one side of the street. And so we've got kind of we're we're to a point where we have to start figuring out where we're gonna put the cars. And so um maybe there's a way that we can deal with the size of the proper, the size of the buildings relative to the size of the property because a six thousand square foot lot probably should have a smaller ADU than Luke's very large lot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let him cook.
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Last call. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on this topic? There are no other folks that would like to comment.
Okay, okay. Um commissioners have any questions at this time before we begin deliberation? And per staff or?
I do.
Okay, please, Ms. Boy.
Um so Amy, remind me the footprint for a residential single lot um for structures. What's the percentage?
Thirty five percent in the RS.
Thank you. So in um reality, you can't have a huge house that takes up half the lot, a six thousand square foot lot and then have a big um even bigger or not as big, but half the size and ADU. That would not abide by code by the thirty five percent. I'm just saying you can't have, I hear comments about, you know, big structures and whatnot, but people are are limited to how much space they can take with buildings.
Right, with structures.
With structures. Okay. And then um what is the current setback for garages right now currently for ADUs? On cor- say corner lots?
On a well, on a corner lot, let's see. It would depend where it is located. Um but your your ADU can be, if it's in the back, it can be five feet from the side of this, the rear side property line.
So it's just on the corner lots. Um currently, is it a five foot setback? Or is it currently a twenty five foot setback?
It what the code says is is it and that that's where we were looking for clarity. It says it has to be behind the principal structure on the secondary. So does behind mean in the rear yard? Does behind mean slightly stepped back from that wall? Uh but that's what it says. So so as of right now, we're ju- we essentially on that secondary street, we're just saying it has to be stepped back. We don't have a dimension for it.
Okay. And then I recall back when when we first started talking about ADUs and code um that you were trying to develop or you're coming up with a program for incentives. I didn't know how how we where we are on that or is that still in the works?
It's it's still in the works. Yep.
But that is something that's being currently worked on that will be presented to us at some point.
It it has been paused for the time being, but a lot of the groundwork has been put in place.
That's all I have for now.
Mr.?
Yes.
Hey Amy, could you go to the language around bedrooms? I I recall having sort of generally removed the restrictions around bedrooms relative to ADUs kind of at all, didn't we? Where did we land on the number of bedrooms?
We decided not to regulate the number.
Yeah, so it's sort of, it is what it is. Right, that's
Right, it's how many linked bedrooms you could create.
Got it, okay. Cool. Um I've got another question relative to what was brought up on the housing or excuse me, on the trees. Which was um and I guess I don't know whether we handled this in deliberation or whether we handle this this now. But they have language that I would recommend we pull back through planning and zoning that we could actually pull into the comp plan. And the one thing we would need their help with is the definition around what is sort of a heritage tree. So we would need them for that. But I recommend that we would, we would pull that back through. Um I don't know the mechanism by which we do that, but I would recommend we table it tonight and bring it up at a future meeting.
We might be getting ahead of ourselves just a tad bit, but that's okay.
Thanks.
Sure. If I recall, we added something to the uh execution table related to that. Cause there is a
We did.
There was a tree survey that was done. And it was just bringing that back into the execution. So that that is referenced in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, we can take a look. I don't want to get us bogged down in this right now. Sorry.
Yeah, officially, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, so I think I'll do that at this point unless anybody else who hasn't spoken would like to. I want you all to speak if you want to. Um so then, yes, now we will uh deliberate and now most of our questions have been directed to city staff and they will have to remain that way. Um as we deliberate. So um we've already had a few comments. Do we have others? Maybe would like to chime in?
I mean, Mr. McGrann. Yeah, I'd like to just you know, I I think the size, the the seven hundred, nine hundred. Um I know we wanted to make sure that there was just this kind of sense of proportionality, scale, uh not being overbearing. Um and I also think that it was a a push to affordability, right? Like in general, the sense is larger is more expensive. Uh and so I think that was our our conversations around that size limitation. Um you look at a number of different structures that have been built around the community. And uh it seems like that is a good number. That's seven hundred square feet is the number that we kind of really landed on to prove that proportionality to things. Um to your point about lot coverage, there's there's some limitations already there. That would restrict that size potentially even further because of the amount of coverage that you'd have on your lot. And to your point, Grant, the the removal of the bedroom restriction, right? Again, that was a nod to affordability. How can we? Can you fit two bedrooms? Can you fit three bedrooms? Uh is it a stacked bunk bed for for kids? Whatever it is, right? The creativity around how you create that affordability within that seven hundred square feet. And I think that we we open that up to be more uh it did not, it was kind of more of like a gross square footage. So you know, people didn't really have to determine if that was conditioned square footage or whatever it was. It was just like the number. Right? So um I can think again, adding that clarity. So um and then on the design side of it, I think that Heather's team trying to provide that nod to the historic preservation, but at the same time, it allows those uh ADU designs to be in concert with the principal structure too. So if the principal structure has more of a modern feel or look to it, then your ADU could have a nod to that too. You know, I think that we could continue to refine these um further and further and and continue to get input. I I do believe though that we have addressed a lot of these uh concerns from the community through the last six months that we've been talking about this. So that's my my thoughts.
And I would concur on particularly, as you say, relating to community. The reason that we're at this point is because of some of the structures that we've seen built around town that people have complained to us about. And it's it's not all one. There's multiple structures. And and so the idea to come up with these kinds of um additional guidelines was in response to prior meetings where everybody Where everybody out there was speaking the opposite of the way you are all speaking tonight. Just so you know, that we got here because of community input that said, um, yeah, we, we don't like what's happening, it needs to change. Um, and, and so that's how we got here, so. And I guess while I'm talking along this line, one thing that that would be probably far more complex, but I certainly liked the idea that was brought up tonight. That instead of having. The specifications delineated so narrowly. The idea of having, having it around objectives. Well, you know, what are the objectives that we would like to, to, uh? To have this accomplish, and that would be things like affordability and it would be things about scale to the neighborhood and it would be about. Lots of, some flexibility with the lot that's there, certainly a nod to, to, uh, any kind of. Uh, trees that are on the property of that, there needs to be flexibility, but it would, it would be far more difficult. To write code that's. Objective-based rather than, than, uh, guideline-based, if you will. But, uh, that's just some of my thoughts. You were gonna say something, Mr. Simmons?
Yeah, no, I wanted to thank, uh, everybody for showing up tonight and the feedback, um, this is probably the most packed. Planning and zoning meeting we've ever had.
No, no. It's up there, it's up there.
In recent history, in recent history, so thanks, everybody for showing up. And thanks, um, to folks for bringing some, um, remarkable specificity, I, I, I think, um. The one thing, and I, I, you know, uh, like was brought up earlier, I don't think we might have got it quite right in terms of the cost value equation. Meaning you get a little more bang for your buck. By getting the folks on site to build the thing. You get more out of, uh, you know, your, your dollar goes further nine hundred square feet than it does seven hundred, meaning. It's more cost-effective. And it's bigger, so i- in terms of things that I'm, I'm willing to relax, I'm, I'm willing to certainly relax that. I think the one thing we could, we could do to incentivize. Yeah, man, it gets, it, it's gonna get tricky around the language, but you know, nine hundred square feet, but you have to get smaller as you go up. Not to exceed height requirements that I think have largely been established. The setback stuff's so hard, especially the corner lots. It's, man, it's tough. Um, I don't have a good solve on that one, um, but I, uh, the, the one thing I, I know we might want to take a look at is. The language that we've come up with here might be a little disjointed to what we have going on in the comp plan. I think we might want to take a look at that.
Specifically?
Yeah, 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 in terms of, um, wh- what this, does this foot to what is in that comp plan? So that would be my. Two cents on it.
Other deliberations?
Well, so far, I think everybody's pretty well voiced the same comments that I would have. I think that, uh, one of the things we've talked about before in the past, though. Was like the flat roof or something similar to that. And I think that from my standpoint, I think that's one we may want to take a little bit. Better look at or have some kind of incentive for that part. Because I understand the same situation with the solar parts and that part that's. Uh, concerned to me.
Mr. Duncan?
Awfully quiet.
Can't have a meeting end until you start.
Speak up, man.
Uh, reserve the right to speak again, too. Yeah, pretty much. Most of the, most of the comments I'd say are things that we've. We've rehashed over and over, um. And I'm one of the people who. Was very hesitant to have design standards and. And I made it pretty clear, and I think we did amend those a little bit. And I think they did become a lot more broad to where. I feel really comfortable that. That a builder, a homeowner should, should have a lot of options to. I don't want to say skirt the design standards, but. But if you were inventive, I think you could get around a lot of them to your own liking. But when it comes to a flat roof, I don't know, I don't think the flat roof fits into that, so I agree. Yeah, and I think it does come back to the incentive idea because. Most of the comments I heard. Are more of a specific. Site issue than an overall city issue. So, like specifically with trees. That could definitely, I mean, how much, how many times is that gonna come up? You know, this could be once a year or once a decade. Um, or maybe a lot more than that, I, I, I'm not sure, but. I feel like. That's gonna be tougher to put into. It, it's gonna be tough to make that language work. Um, so. It's almost like I keep, keep coming back to like, is there some sort of conditional use permit process, but I, but I don't, I know that won't work. The setback stuff, we've spent a lot of time on, I think that's the original thing that we started talking about in the very beginning. And the setbacks are, are a mess currently and. I, I like the way they're presented right now. Specifically because of the garage factor. Or accessory structures. That look like. They're out of place, and if we're gonna call, if somebody's actually gonna be living in those, then it, it becomes other issues with parking. And, uh, and where is the yard and, and so on? And I don't think there is a solution that everybody's gonna love with parking, but. And we did talk about parking a lot too, which I had other ideas on it and. I was outnumbered on that, so. I think as far as affordability goes, I mean, we could talk about this forever, but, uh. Affordability right now is getting better because of. Things are out of our control. World economy, national economy. Interest rates. And so on, uh, but something that is in here that I'm a big fan of is the allowance for modular manufactured structures, which I think will open the door for. Far more affordable options. Who knows if it'll actually work out, but. I think that's a big deal because cost of building. On-site is, is very expensive. Yeah, like I said, I, most of the comments are, are, um. Are issues that I. I've, I've ran through and I've asked questions about during our, during this. Fairly long process for, it seems like an ADU is like a small part of this, this big city. Code. But it's become like, we've debated this and been through this, it's like every. Month, we've, we've talked about it for quite a while. Um, the size, the seven hundred square feet. I'll admit, a couple of years ago, when I heard about the going to nine hundred, I was like, oh, yeah, that's great, that makes sense. But then, and, and so through this process, the seven hundred square feet has. Has been more appealing to me because of what people have mentioned that. It should be more affordable, it should be more of an accessory and not a. Overbearing, you know, larger than the principal structure. Are, are ADUs solely for the reason of affordability? No, they're not. Um, they're for accessory place to live on a property. That's the primary, uh, use in my opinion, and that's. And I have family members who live in an ADU that are smaller than seven hundred square feet and are very adequate. So I'm. I wanted smaller than this, I think, I think I said I wanted six hundred square feet, but. Nobody liked that either. I wanted the second-story ones to be even smaller. Nobody liked that either, so I think we know where I stand on that one. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm glad you touched Moe's on the, uh, modular homes because that was not in, and that was something that. Was important to us as far as affordability and a different option. Um, so that's, that's another thing I think a lot of people need to consider. Um, and not just building from the ground up.
Mr. Chair, just on speaking of the, uh, modular homes. I think that twelve months should be moved up to maybe eighteen months or twenty-four months. Because it does take a long time to get those built, especially if you're having something built specially. Just to give it a little more flexibility that way.
Twelve months in there now, right?
Yes.
I don't know, Amy, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, again, the twelve month was. Put in there, the intent is, well, we don't want our fifteen-year-old. Uh, modulars being brought in. I, we can certainly check on. You know, is twenty-four months. Is that gonna change anything? I don't think so. Allowing more ti- you know. Something that was built in a HUD-approved. Factory twenty-four months ago. Should be just as good as something twelve months ago.
Mr. Chair, we could even go eighteen months, but just. I said we could even go eighteen months, but just a little bit more time, because. It does, it usually takes about twelve months to, uh, build in the first place, so.
After design.
After design.
So it's Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Twelve months now, is there an option for an extension of time? Can they request more time?
The code doesn't currently say that, we could certainly add language. Again, that, we just want to make sure that it's. Current construction, not. Very old units that are coming in.
Commissioners, do we? Have anybody who feels like moving forward with any kind of? Motion to adopt, motion to adopt with changes or motion to table for more time to refine?
Can I motion to table?
You certainly can. For, for the discussion and city staff, let me know what kind of timeframe we would have to. Add.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel like we're gonna have to provide you with some specificity around. What the heck we're.
Yeah, we would like direction on. You want changes brought back, what are those changes?
And if I can just interject. For clarity. If you could, if you could outline and you could probably, before you actually make the motion, have a little, a little bit longer deliberation on what you're actually motioning for. So, but for clarity, when you make the motion, if you can outline, outline what changes, um, you're gonna be proposing.
What are you thinking, Grant?
Uh, I'm about ready to say a bunch of things, it's gonna make me unpopular.
With who?
I don't, just in general, maybe, well, let's find out. Yeah, exactly, votes are in, who cares?
There's an hour left.
Yeah, so I'll say it for the record that I'm a fan of, and, and if the, if the house allows for the burden. A bigger ADU, it just makes sense i- in my mind, and I don't know how we account for that in this. Um, I'm also a, a fan, and this is, I don't know how to solve for the parking in this, but. But, uh, a larger, single-story ADU. In that it creates more sort of value infill. Relative to the building dollar, right, because, you know, your dollar's gonna get a little more value the bigger. In terms of just sort of the sunk cost relative to building. So, um. Uh, that, I'm just introducing lots of complications that's gonna take lots of probably discussion, but that's, that's sort of my two cents on it.
Well, and, um, I suppose we could kind of work through these things one at a time.
Yeah.
Sort of thing here, um, I have heard.
Good talk mouth cliff.
Well, now, yes, I've heard you say you're in favor of larger, I've heard Commissioner Duncan say he's in favor of smaller.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the reason, I mean, in my perspective, the reason we got here is because the community asked them to be smaller. And I'm on that side of that equation.
Yeah.
Not smaller than seven hundred, but smaller than nine hundred. And. That, I mean, so th- that would be an issue, is that something we want to explore, or are we in? A majority that seven hundred is a good number? Or do we want that to be further explored?
I mean. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We, we went over that so many times, I think every single time we had this discussion about ADUs, the size always came up. And we struggled with that, and I think. The consensus then was seven hundred square feet was what we could all stomach. Because of what the community wanted.
Correct, that's what I was gonna say, is not just a consensus here of us commissioners, but of the input we have gotten from the community.
Yes.
At prior meetings.
I'm willing to be a dissenting opinion.
Yes, and that's fine. What kind of incentives would we have for flexibility as regards the, uh, nuances to lots, whether that be trees or corner lots or anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that I can think of is, is the situation where the twenty-five-foot setback. On the corner lot, you know, I think that if you are building an ADU that does not have a garage component to it, that. Probably twenty-five step foot should go away, because the, the reason why it's there. Is if someone's parking a car in the driveway, that they're not in the street or on, on the sidewalk, right? So I think that that would be one thing to. Look at. An incentive.
Yeah.
To, to. Eliminate that setback requirement if. Uh, no parking is part of that ADU.
Can I just clarify what the, what the requirement is, it's only twenty-five feet from a street running. If you have a vehicle entrance.
Right, okay, that's the way it currently is proposed.
That's the way that's proposed, yeah.
If you did not have. A vehicle entrance, you could be within five feet.
And that's actually a requirement in our current code for attached garages. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, is that not in? Detached garage, is that just attached garages have the twenty-five-foot setback?
I believe it's both. You have a. Garage wall facing the street or a vehicle entry, including a carport facing the street, needs to be set back twenty-five feet. And that also goes for uncovered parking stalls, so if your concrete driveway is in front of your house, it also needs to be twenty-five feet deep. To prevent parking on the sidewalk.
That's what I thought. I, I thought that that was the case.
I know that, uh, my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, but twenty seventeen or whatever, the ADU thing came in, the major concern of. The public was parking. Did any of you all live in a neighborhood that has a lot of ADUs and therefore it's hard to find a place on the street to park? Do you live where there's ADUs?
Yes.
A lot. And there seems to be adequate parking.
Yes.
Cause that would give us more flexibility of what we're talking about here if it has not been an issue. But that had, that was a major issue, if I'm not mistaken, when ADUs first came into existence, and that was that.
I would say through the. Input we got through the housing and neighborhoods. Parking came up. Many times, but it went both ways, some people thought we should eliminate parking requirements. Uh, but we got a lot of comments about making sure that if you. Are allowing ADUs to be accessed on an alley, they have a place to go in the winter.
And that's still the case.
It definitely is a community concern, I'm just sharing that.
Cause, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Cause that has not changed, correct, Amy, we still have the one parking, um, requirement for ADUs.
Right, correct.
Does that make? The corner lot ADUs have to be twenty-five feet back though?
If it doesn't have a vehicle. Entrance, no.
But where's their parking? They have to have one.
Uh, potentially they're off an alley, so instead of. If you looked at this one. If they oriented the. Opening to the garage off the alley, then they could be. They could set, be set back closer to the street on the side.
I mean, I, I think I'm just. I'm struggling to, uh, provide specific guidance of things that we want staff to continue to research and. Change, I mean, other than changing the. From twelve to twenty-four months. That's the most specific thing that we've come up to.
I agree with, I agree with that, because we've gone back and forth so much over all of these details. Um, with that public input. Um, and now more public input. So it's, um, yeah, I don't know what else we could. Hammer out.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes.
But was there any, was there anything to be discussed relative to, to, uh, in? But was there any, was there anything to be discussed relative to, to, uh, incentives around trees? Setbacks, et cetera. Was that, did we ever chat about that?
We did.
I think the only thing that, I mean, my comment in that earlier had been is how could we um, structure into code flexibility with things like that? And it wouldn't have to be just about trees, it could be about other nuances to a lot.
I have no idea, relaxed setbacks, I don't.
And how the, the subjectivity of that with individuals, I mean, you can't, how do you how do you differentiate, you know, what's a, you know, heritage tree or trees that people just want to keep because they like them?
Well, I would argue that, um, excuse me.
Are you okay?
We need to follow Mister Chair.
Yes, yeah.
Relative to the comment I had made earlier, that, um, they had provided some language specificity, which I recommended that we take a look at in terms of what constitutes a heritage tree, meaning it is fairly specific. And if there's something that can be done relative to the incentivization of saving that on private land, like, i- is it worth taking a look at? I guess that would be my, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make here.
Mister Chair, in the, um, the plan for, with trees, the urban, uh, forestry, I, I'm, I'm not messing, I'm messing up the title of this plan. I, I think that's where the specificity of heritage trees um, is labeled, that the reason it's not in the draft comp plan was because it was dressed in that plan. But we did make reference to it there, um, because it was important, but the specifics are in the, um,
The specific.
Yes.
Reference tree.
Correct, Amy?
Yes, where the commission went, uh, Mister Flint and his daughter, um, did make the request to planning commission, you postponed action, we came back with some language, both that will change code, the urban forestry master plan, will change our forestry code, um, that at the public hearing for city council, the same recommendations were made, so city council may consider those changes. But again, we're discussing accessory structures tonight, not necessarily, uh, heritage trees.
We took a side road to heritage trees.
Thanks, Grant.
Thank you.
Well, and let me, uh, add one thing, um, Commissioner Dunkle had, um, brought up, saying that perhaps it was could we ask for a mechanism where there could be conditional uses? You said you didn't think that would be, uh, an avenue that's available to us? Is that an avenue that's available to us? And I don't know if this would be the body that would look at that, or if it would be city staff or somebody else, but if somebody has some sort of nuance to their lot, and they, and there's just, is that, is there a way that that can be incorporated?
Typically, uh, lot challenges are, um, reasons to consider variance, but a lot, currently, a tree is not a unique situat- that's what they're trying to correct. Um, is there a way we can work in conditional use as possible, but, but, um, again, I think we need to get the comprehensive plan adopted that points us to what we need to update in our urban forestry plan, what we need to update in our codes. Um, and again, had I, had I thought that we wouldn't have a comprehensive plan by now, we would not have brought this ADU code forward, so um, at this point, I, you know, I can't guess what codes we will do, but we know that that is of community interest, and we certainly will balance that with creating housing, keeping community character, and all the other goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan that need to be implemented into code.
Mister Chair?
Commissioner Boyd.
So would that behoove us to get, um, maybe that's what you're looking for, Grant? Um, maybe we do postpone in, until we get the current comprehensive plan passed.
I'd like that.
Um, and that would be a sufficient reason to postpone, correct?
Certainly.
Yes, Zach?
Yes, it sure would.
So that's, there's the option.
Wow, we should have figured that out about fifteen minutes ago.
Yeah, thank goodness I'm here.
Well, I, I would.
Yeah.
I would, uh, think that there's probably community members who are probably eager to submit permits for ADUs. Um, I think one of them's in the crowd here that wants to have maybe two bedrooms or three bedrooms. Uh, maybe it's not meeting the size that they want, but at least it gives them a flexibility now of having a two-bedroom or three-bedroom ADU. Uh, comprehensive plan is going to go through another pro- it's going to go through a process here. Um, I think that we'd be very optimistic that that is approved by the end of the year with the way the process goes. Um, so we're, we're probably sitting sometime beginning of next year that we're going to then re look at this.
Good point.
Uh, so, you know, are we prepared to let this continue to be out there for another nine months? Or are we prepared to go ahead and, and provide some of these options to the community for ADUs? While, uh, it doesn't mean they can't be changed later on, right? We're changing it, it was changed a couple of years ago, and it's being changed maybe today. Uh, doesn't mean it can't be changed in a year. Uh, my, my, my recommendation is we, we, we move forward, we, uh, provide this to the community so that they can start to, uh, use it to have more bedrooms within the ADUs, because I think that was one of the big concerns that we heard is more bedrooms. Um, and we get it out there.
Mister Chair?
He speaks.
Commissioner Dunkle?
I, uh, my opinion is we could move forward, uh, we could recommend approval with changes, which the change I'm looking at would be up to a twelve-month extension for modular or manufactured ADUs. And that's, that's the only concrete one that I can see right now. I think the incentives are another topic that is like an add-on, which these incentives probably go into other other idea, other parts of the code. And they can also take care of the tree thing, but that, that's, that's a separate subject outside of this anyway. Um, and I agree that the comp plan could be, the comp plan may not ever get approved.
Has to, what are you talking about?
No. In two thousand nineteen, I first sat here, and we talked about the comp.
My first meeting, when I, on this commission was starting that, but.
And I know a lot of things will happen in between there.
Yeah.
And I think several different staffs along the way have put in a lot of work. And, uh, and I'm hopeful that the comp plan survives, but I, I'm fearful that it may not. I think we'll be back hearing more and more and more. So, I'd love to, I'd lo- I'd like to approve every, all the hard work that has been put into this and, and move it forward. So I'm ready, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, so the, yes, we'll, we'll make a motion, and then if we need to do more amending, we'll do that.
Yeah, and you can add on, right?
Pardon, were you?
I'll clarify, um, Ms. Tweetin just asked if, um, Commissioner Simmons had a motion on the table, and it was my opinion that he didn't, I, I feel like I interjected prior to the motion actually being made.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I move the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, recommend the proposed zoning text amendments to city council with the following changes. Up to twelve-month extension for modular or manufactured uh, building structures for ADUs.
Can I ask for clarification of that at this point?
Yeah.
It's currently at twelve months, so you're saying add twelve to that to make it twenty-four?
I like the idea of them having to ask for it. I don't like the idea of just an open twenty-four months, because I think there are there are modular structures that you can buy in a lot, lot less time if they're not custom, you know, designed.
But my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the way it's written is twelve months, so that's not an amendment, that's not a change.
Uh, up to a twelve-month extension on top.
Okay, now I'm understanding, now I'm understanding, now, okay.
That is, that's a motion.
Okay.
That is a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, and, uh, now let us see if there's any other additions we'd like to see to that motion.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I still like nine hundred, I like nine hundred square feet.
I know.
I'm gonna die on that sword.
Yeah.
All right.
Night, and in my opinion on that is nine hundred square feet is what got us here.
Fair. So you could add the nine hundred, if you give a second, then is that, is that right?
Yeah, I think it'll be kind of bifurcated because it's, it's providing two separate motions, I, yeah, okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with the possibility of a twelve-month extension on.
Your, the motion is to recommend to city council.
Correct, correct, yes, recommend to city council, and I don't, I formally did not have a second to this, did I, did we? I don't, yeah, there you go. Hey, I thought we must have, right?
Yeah, we did.
Let's talk more. Um, you, I'm just trying to look at everything here that's transpired and see what else. Okay, I guess we'll call for the vote. Yep, yes, question?
Uh, if Commissioner Dunkle could please, um, make findings for why or how the code, uh, is compatible or consistent or does not, is not contrary to the current comprehensive plan? Any goals and objectives that you believe support, that these changes support? I believe I provided some, I'm not saying, those you have to, you just provided some in the staff report.
You did, um, well, as I said, the we've been working hard on this for a considerable period of time. Staff has found that the goals that were brought forth from the community, um, which was like, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have any glasses with me, I'm having a hard time reading all these.
Well.
But.
Might I assist?
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Because I think one of the things that we could certainly say is that a common objective of everybody in this room is affordable housing, and the notion of trying to encourage modular, uh, homes could help us achieve that affordable housing goal. So the reason to the, for the extension is to have the opportunity for more, more affordable modular homing to be a larger part of the equation. Is that what your intent was or something like that?
Yeah, and more, so, uh, a goal of efficient land use, it will be achieved. Um, the design criteria that was brought forward, this, this adheres to that, and and is a concession from our discussion and the, and what was brought forward to us, so I feel like there's a good compromise, and um, we've, we've, we've really tried to hit the, um, community character, uh, neighborhood uh, character, which was one of the top things that was important to the community. The design standards hit that with the historic, retaining historic, uh, neighborhoods, and, um, but it still leaves, and what I like, the, um, the ability for builders and homeowners to, to build however they like within those very lenient, broad standards. Um, uh, we had a need in current code to, to handle, um, setbacks that were not that were not, um, not clear, and also were not, um, really not enforceable to a lot of older accessory structures that could be uh, or that the community wanted to be turned into accessory dwellings, so in a large way, this, we feel like this takes care of that. So I'm gonna wrap it up with that.
Yes.
Good one.
Great, yeah.
I mean, any specific goals or objectives from the comprehensive plan, for example? You would name one.
Is that sufficient?
She wants the goal H two.
Oh, the number.
I heard efficient use of land.
Goal H two.
Affordability.
Right, so like.
Yeah, the, in the, in the staff report, there was a table provided that just kind of went through uh, what the changes were and what were
There we go.
Goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan that those changes are consistent with.
There you go. It's consistent with all those.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
Well, I think like, may I?
Yeah.
I mean, a specific goal was to retain Sandpoint's position as a historic town. That's from the current plan. Um, looking at the wording in the new plan, it would be Sandpoint's unique identity, character, sense of place is retained. So various, same objective, very similar.
Give, give.
But that's a specific goal.
Correct, yeah, I would stick with the current comprehensive.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
The goal CD dash one. Is that it?
Yeah, I don't know that we need, we could say goal H one.
Goal H one, yeah.
Yep.
Policy.
Housing variety providing types across, income levels across Sandpoint. I think those would go well with.
Yeah.
Your amendment?
Do you need more?
I have to resecond that.
Do not need more, we do not need more.
Just supportive.
I will resecond that stuff.
I don't need to yet. Um, yeah, I, I have some apprehensions, I just wish that there was a way for some more flexibility on some of these, uh, issues, I don't know how to get there, but. Anything else, anybody else wants to add before we? The motion is to recommend approval of the standards to the city council. Um, with the one change that we would look at, potentially of a twelve-month extension on modular homes being brought into line to service an ADU.
Sounds good.
Okay, Madam Clerk, your time.
This will be a real call vote. Commissioner Hastings?
I'm gonna have to vote no.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you all for being here. I hope you felt your voices were heard, if, even if you did not get the outcome you were looking for. Alrighty, thank you. We're sitting. Uh, the next, uh, item on the agenda is an update presentation on a previously approved conditional use permit city application, PCUP twenty-two dash zero 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 two, and I will now yield the floor to city planner Amy Tweetin for an introduction.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, again, um, this is, oops, sorry. Uh, this is an application that was, um, before the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, in June of twenty twenty-two, it's conditionally used permit. Um, and it was, at the time, it was a hundred and thirty-four residential units, two mixed-use buildings. Uh, it is still a met, two mixed-use buildings, and uh, what I'd like to do is turn, um, the presentation over to Todd Butler, the architect, to talk through some of the changes, uh, modifications. Again, it is a large project, they have been working towards getting the building permits, but there was the groundwork to do, the traffic impact analysis. Um, so that's, when they go through the conditional use permit process, they try to get the project as far along as they can, but then there's a lot that has to happen. they try to get the project as far along as they can, but then there's a lot that has to happen between, um, and actual construction. Um, so I just had asked Todd if he would come and give us an update.
Thank you.
This should only take an hour or two.
Alright.
I would like to make a motion that it be limited to.
I'll give you the same amount of time that you gave me. The share screen. So, uh, yeah, uh, this is a big project. Um, the, the purpose of the conditional use permit was for buildings over fifteen thousand square feet. So um, that's what we, what we went through last year and um, I'm just gonna touch base, uh, address the, the items on the conditional use that, that were part of the conditional use permit and should, to share with you where we're at with that at this time. So the first, the first item was to complete a traffic impact study. We did that. Um, I think that was approved um, in October of last year, so we moved forward with that. There were some items in that traffic study, basically, that we did not have to meet. Um, our earlier plan had an additional um connection to Boyer. It, it, at this time, we weren't um, required by the impact, um, traffic impact study to provide a turn lane. But there was language in it that said that would probably have to be looked at again in twenty twenty-nine. So while working, working with Amanda Wilson, she said, we're gonna make that a, a requirement right now. So part of this current project is adding a turn lane in Boyer, and we did away with the northernmost um access closest to the railroad tracks. Um, item number two was um, addressing work shall commence within one year of the following um, date of approval, which you know, we're nine months into this, but that was a question I brought up during that um, process of what is work? I mean, I've been working on it. My office has been working on it. They've also done some mass excavation on this site, re, re, um, replacing soils and getting things prepped as we're just working with the design and trying to get this in for permit, which will be by the end of the year. Our goal has been to get it in this month. Um, but there's a lot of issues to deal with. Uh, item number three was the duration of the development shall be completed with COs within three years with two one-year extensions possible. So um, I think we're on track with that right now. Um, our, our goal is for construction to start next spring. So um, and as of current planning, they are planning to do both buildings, one after another. So um, I think we should be in track with that. I, I don't know if we will have to ask for those one-year extensions, but um, we'll cross that bridge when it comes. Uh, item four was a design issue that we'll meet. Um, item five was a short plot will be required. We're in the process of working on that right now, combining the three lots into one. Um, item six is another design issue that we'll deal with. Uh, let's see. Understand the conditional use permit does not run with the land. Item eight is based on environmental covenant associated with property and extraction of groundwater. Um, anyway, we've been working, they, the, they're working with every agency that's required to, to keep that process moving, and I think they did that as part of the mass excavation that uh, took place earlier this year. So then we got to item nine, the detailed analysis um, of the design process, and this is where um as we're getting closer to submitting for permit, I'm trying to cross Ts and dot Is, and I called Amy and I said, hey, this is where we're at. How does this whole review process work, right? Because there's this, this language in here that says, um, you know, revisions may be necessary, city staff needs to weigh in on it. So we started that conversation, and that's why I'm here today, is she wanted me to share with, with you some of those changes and, and just the um you know, the development of ideas and, and everything else. So if, um, I'll just kind of see what I can do here.
Quick question for you, Lyra.
Yep.
The, the diagram that we're seeing now.
Yes.
That is the, I thought that was the original, but that's the new one.
Yeah, it's, it's really close.
It's close, but that's the new one.
This is the newest.
Okay, gotcha.
That is correct.
Um, I had him in reverse order, but thank you.
Yeah. So yeah, basically, this is a very similar layout. Um, I will say that as, as Amy mentioned, I think our original said something about a hundred and thirty-five units. We changed the design and we are offering more one-bedroom units than two-bedroom, and again, it's trying to hit a niche of affordable housing and trying, you know, it's just the market analysis. Um, what I will share is we're at a hundred and seventy-three units and our book, our footprints of our building are smaller than what we originally came in. So um, I think it's kind of a positive. The other, the other um, some of the other things, what you're seeing in the parking lot with the red and the crosshatch red is indicating storage units and carports. So it was just a, a model that we've been looking at. I've, I'm doing projects with these owners in Montana and um Oregon right now. And as we just keep going through this process of developing these homes um, or, or this, this living style, this is something that we really wanted to look at, and especially for the Sandpoint market with a lot of snow, we want to try to provide covered parking where we can. And also, it makes a lot of sense to me in a four-story building to provide your storage on the ground level. So you're not trying to um take a bicycle up four stories and through a building and those kind of things, and place for snow tires and all of that. So, so that's kind of the model that we're looking at here. Our biggest challenge, um, but I think we've, we've been working through with engineering is it's a little bit different model than before, but we've got our drainage wells on the north and south and a big challenge with us have been the power lines um, that serve all of the north. Uh, pondere and everything else, those are high-powered lines that there was a contradiction with this zoning that you have to build right up to the property line, but we're too close to the power lines to do that. So we, we're um, coordinating with Avista right now. The two blue lines that you see on that is showing us swinging the lines to the other side of Boyer. And just in preliminary talks, that looks like Avista is gonna be willing to work with us on that. So um, that is going to solve our um, our issues with building setbacks and just the coordination of construction. Um, let's see, but I, I don't know how deep we need, um, you guys want to get into this. Um, I can show you just a quick little fly-around if that helps, just to give you a feeling of what we're, what we're trying to achieve here. Let's see here. So this is kind of the style that we're trying to do, and, and again, um this section of code is very specific on, on style, you know, it, it tells you you're pretty much limited to three materials, wood, brick or stone. And, and so we're trying to give it that look, even if, and, and this is again, a conversation that we've had with Planning Department, and I, I think it'll come out in the, in the permit process. You know, a lot of these will be like a hardy board product, but with a wood shingle look or a wood grained look. Um, and then also the stone, and then we have a, a number of products on here that are metal, but they're a wood look metal. So i- it's not supposed, you know, we're, we're trying to, trying to give the, the image that you guys are looking for, but um also work within some costs and everything else. So this is just kind of a feel. I'll try to fly through this very slowly and um if I can. Big project, but that's. So again, creating the, the street-side atmosphere, that's, that's the biggest part of this code is trying to uh, I think the intent is to provide an atmosphere where, you know, you're addressing the, the primary street, sorry. Try to slow this down a little bit. So in that, we are we are trying to create um courtyards, patios, seating along the um, the street side. So all of the ground floor will be non-residential. What we're looking at is um, small office spaces that can be leased and then um, functions that will support primarily the um, this development. So there will be a rec room, gymnasium, uh, gym-type functions. The two buildings will be um, will have a large plaza, again, open to, open to the street, open to the public, but with fire pits, seating, cornhole, just outdoor activities, trying to take advantage of that. You gotta be going here. The two buildings will be very similar in um, design and scale with some different amenities in the different, in the different buildings. Sorry, this is really glitchy. But you can see kind of the, the intended atmosphere. Um, and then I'll fly around the buildings to kind of show you what the, the smaller structures, the parking structures and all of that. Looking at developing a sport, sport court. And then you can see kind of what the planned, the, the planned um parking and storage structures would look like, trying to keep them very low-profile, utilitarian, um, really gonna be designed to hold the snow rather than shed it. That's gonna help with both snow storage on-site as well as um drainage requirements. And a little bit more of a pedestrian scale. It's kind of going through. And you know, the, the intent is to keep the design similar on all, all sides of the buildings. So this is the backside, all, all from the parking lot. Gives you kind of a feel of the, the overall plan and intent. So that's just kind of a brief update. The, the last item on the list was no design waivers. We're still not asking for it. Um, and my understanding is if we were, that had to go through a whole nother process, and this has taken long enough. We wanna, we wanna push forward with this and hopefully get this in um, as soon as possible for permits and uh, get constructing next year. So. Anybody has any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Questions?
Here.
Yes.
Uh, God, thanks for the update. Um, where did we land on that uh, north side of the parking lot? There kind of seemed like it's a, I think, fire lane, like a hundred fifty feet deep is the restriction, right? I think you're, you're deep in that.
Um.
But how does that work?
There, there, well, I, I will say this, that was my concern with losing the, the access on North Boyer. So before we were instructed to remove that, I said, I want to get assurance that with the fire department that this is okay, and I was given that assur- assurance. So typically what it is, is you have a hundred and, I want to say it's a hundred and fifty-foot dead end.
Yeah.
But I think because you have so much access from Boyer and everywhere else, and now that the power lines are out of the way, it, that, that's what the concern is with that. So there will be plenty of access. Um, the rest of it, there's only the one dead end, you know, on, on, I can go back to that site plan if you wanted to see there.
I mean, if, it just seems odd that they would grant that because from what I understood, that the hammerhead thing, right? Like, they don't want to be backing up.
But, but they don't need it because you can get at it from Boyer. So it's typically when you're getting landlocked, that you have to go down and you have to provide that turnaround through, through the rest of the, um, let me get to that real quick.
They, they wouldn't even need to enter the development to fight fire.
Not, not from this side and the rest of the, the rest of the parking lot. Um.
Well, if you're fighting a fire in the northeast corner of the building, building two.
So, so this, what, what you'll see here, um, yeah, it's northeast. That, um, let me even zoom in a little bit more if we can see a dimension there. Too far. So like, you can see that bank of parking there, that, that carport C, you know, that's fifty-five feet. You're, you're about a hundred feet with that leg.
Mm-huh.
That's within the guidelines that they could pull in there and they can back, back out, and then they can still maneuver around the rest of the um, parking area to get in and out. So that, that would be the argument I would make if this comes up in final permitting, but I, it was, the north side was probably my biggest concern, was um, because we had through access before and um you know, it, it was asked to remove that. So, but I, I, I do think there's adequate access around the whole building for, for the firefighting.
Yeah, I hope so.
Right now, there's, there's two entry points, is that right? One on Sixth and one on Chestnut? If I'm reading that correctly, okay.
Correct, yeah. So you've got, you know, you've got six Chestnut and then of course, the whole frontage along Boyer. What you'll see, you might see um like some red dashed lines in the um, in the parking lot. That's fire truck radius. So I, I, I run that through all of my turns and angles.
Yeah.
When I'm laying these out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
So in the previous plan, you had two hundred and four parking spaces. Now you have more units, but a smaller footprint. So do you have more parking spaces available, or did that?
That I had was two oh four in the first one?
Yes.
Um, I think I'm at two um, at two hundred and eight. Proposed, yeah. And then um, you can kind of see a breakdown of it there. Some of them are, are kind of set aside. I call the nine seasonal. We took direct lanes from driveways that we plan on stacking snow. Um, so, so I was trying to indicate how, what we're required is a hundred and sixty-five. That's the minimum requirement. So we're trying to provide more than that for reality.
Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Like.
Thank you.
You still have an hour and a half.
Let's go get a board.
Hey. Anybody in the room want to comment on anything? Missus, and then we need to.
Uh, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, actually, people in community have asked me what's going on, and it was just this week, so now I know.
There you go. Can't talk about it though.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, you can talk, we can talk about it.
That's good, guy.
I think one thing that I, that I want to bring up, changing gears entirely and all, and city staff direct me when needed. Um, some uh, public comment that came in that was not concerning any of the business we were doing here tonight, but the idea of uh, overall height, particularly in the downtown area.
Yeah.
And if that is something that we wanted to address.
Yep.
On a more rapid basis than what we maybe otherwise would have. Thoughts? Is that something we want to move forward with an agenda? City staff, tell me where we are in that.
We're just discussing.
I, I missed the first part of what you said.
Okay.
Oh, Amy, this is all about you.
No problem. There's been concern, you know, I, obviously, like we see with a lot of changes that are happening, that uh, that particularly in the downtown historic shopping district, we may be seeing very tall buildings going in. And there was um, public comment that said they would like to see us address that issue sooner rather than later. So I'm asking, is that something we want to see put to our agenda? You tell me um, what would be the proper mechanism to do that?
Uh, we can certainly.
Uh, we can certainly start talking about it. However, we really need to update the comprehensive plan. Because the current building heights were updated. Based on our current comprehensive plan. So when it went to an allowance for 65 feet with structured parking or upper floor residential. That was based on the plan currently adopted. So, uh, we do know there is a lot of discussion in the current plan about it. Um, that was part of the whole. Impetus behind the downtown waterfront competition to come up with. Uh, what downtown could look like. Um, in that, I actually, on your next agenda, I'm going to be, um, kind of going through the report. Uh, is going to counsel next week for possible acceptance. Um, but the commission as a whole hasn't really reviewed or discussed it. But they do have some really good, uh, building massing illustrations and suggestions for code updates. So, um, that gives us some of the information. But realistically, we do need the comprehensive plan. Adopted. To start changing building heights.
Okay.
Yeah.
You certainly may, Commissioner Boyd.
So it's my understanding with the waterfront design, they recommended 55 feet. As their height.
It was 55 or 50, I can't remember which.
Fifty five.
Within what boundary? Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes.
Within what boundary was the 55?
It's the height limit for downtown.
Just the downtown area.
For the down, yes, yeah. Uh, and that may, that means the corner of Cedar and Bridge, I mean, First and Bridge. The zero point A and P's area, right? So that whole corridor down there, but yeah, that.
And the other side of the course too, is that is guiding principles. That is not, that is not part of the master plan. That is not anything that's codified in any way. It is just kind of some guiding principles. At this point.
I mean, is there any way to simultaneously start the conversation like we have done with the ADU? Code updates that we've been working on in conjunction with the comp plan? Cause we've, we've tied that in.
No, we certainly, we certainly can start talking through. Home.
And we updated the airport chapter before we did anything else, because there was an immediate need to do that.
Right, there were legal reasons why that needed to move forward.
Yeah.
And statutory reasons.
Yep.
Could I make a point of order?
You certainly may.
Are we in the commissioner roundtable?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we do have folks on Zoom, I'd just like to clarify whether or not there is public comment that needs to. Be given as an agenda item eight.
Typically at the commissioners roundtable, there, there isn't public comment, but council.
There is a, uh, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, we went through public comment already. Ooh, but perhaps people on Zoom did not, I mean, I, I, I asked if there was public comment. But if we skipped over anybody in Zoom who wants public comment, then we're going to go back up and let them comment.
Is that appropriate?
Now that we've exposed ourselves to.
Yeah, I think we should afford them the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there, Greg Flint did sign a comment card, but I believe he has left the room, but, um, in terms of in person. Then on Zoom, if there's anyone who cares to comment during the public comment period, please raise your hand at this time. Last call, public comment, if you're on Zoom.
And, and you can mention that, that this is public comment on any topic, not necessarily things on the agenda.
Correct.
Yeah.
Items not on the agenda. Okay, no one on Zoom is raising their hand, so thank you.
Okay, so we escaped that one. Okay. But I did say we were doing public comments, and I didn't hear anybody, so we moved on, so. All right, anything else on commissioners roundtable?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I mean, just to clarify, so our next regular meeting is on the fifth of December.
Correct.
And then what is, you said, you mentioned something about commissioners being a part of the. Uh, 29th and, uh, 7th discussions.
Right, the, um, comprehensive plan open house, um, council had asked that. If the, the commission join council members at those open house if you're available.
Okay, so do we need to sign up?
No.
Do we have a, uh, restriction on who can be there?
No, we'll, we'll post it as a, a meeting.
Okay.
Um, not that decisions are made at, but that there will be a quorum of members present.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Duck, were you going to say something a moment ago?
Yeah, um. On the height topic, um. So we had one email and I know there's been a considerable amount of displeasure with the 65 height, but. I'm not seeing anybody bring up the fact that they have to have the parking. Like there's an incentive to get to 65 by doing a lot of other things that make it possible. Which maybe alleviate down, you know, the parking situation in the area. Um, and then also that it has to have a residential component, which is a, it's a mixed. It becomes a mixed use facility, which. I know it probably doesn't sound like affordable housing is being met, but. It is housing, it is units, so those things have to happen to hit that height, which. I'm in favor of, I mean. I don't know if I'm going to like it when it's done, but like as somebody mentioned earlier tonight, you know, it's not my property. Maybe 65 is a lot, but. I don't know, I mean, I'm open to talking about.
It was your point, you might get more utility out of that extra 10 feet.
Well, I'm, I'm a fan of mixed use, so if it was just residential only, I'm not, I'm probably not that into it. But since it has to meet so many different demands of the space. Uh, I like that, that there's, you know. Building up is going to be more of a, uh, but more, it's going to be a bigger use of a smaller footprint. So the height, I mean, it doesn't have to be more than about 12 feet tall, the block of you. So anything more than that. You know, we might need more cell towers or something because of the height, but. To me, I mean, I don't know how tall the, the bank building is, but there was a large discussion about the Columbia Bank or Umpqua Bank building. For, I believe years before it was built. And I'm not sure what the height is, but.
Is anybody here know?
Sixty five.
That is 65.
There's 65, yeah.
Okay, so we've survived that. Well, and it is not mixed use. So. I'm, I'm into a, a real discussion about it so that, so the whole community can, can really hear all the facts about how this. Becomes what it is. Because we're in this situation in other areas where, um, we've had a lot of discussion and there's not been a lot of people hearing it. Which is a problem. And I guess that's partially our fault, but, um, I still believe in everything that we've talked about and everything we've decided upon. We've, we've done it under a lot of research and a lot of due diligence, so. I'd love to see more of that in the future on any topic, especially this one, because I know it's going to be a big deal.
Mr. Chair. I concur, yes, Commissioner Benner.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the study down there actually have setbacks for building height? So that if you step back.
They do, uh, and our current code does as well. It has, uh, required setbacks at. If you're over 35 feet, 45 feet, 65 feet has to be stepped back 10%. Of the greater of the length or the width to 20 feet. And I think the massing recommendation is 55 feet and then a step back of 20 feet at. Thirty five feet.
If I, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I will, uh, to address Mo's, um, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Dunkle. Um, the, uh, so with this campaigning thing that I've been doing for a while, uh. There's been a lot of talk with the community, um, and there's a lot of discussion and a lot of worried people. That don't want to see that 65 feet downtown. So I've heard a majority of that, probably most of my conversations have been with that. And there's been a lot of conversations. So hopefully those same people, when we do start discussing that, will actually, um, voice their opinions.
And if I might.
Beforehand.
Yes.
Not after.
Two things, if I might interject, one, I think is that yes, when we're talking about that height, we're talking about a very limited space. We're not talking about Sandpoint, we're talking about downtown Sandpoint. The other thing too, is that I think that we need to prepare for, we've seen it on several occasions. As we have months of deliberation and meeting and it's not until.
Yeah, 11th hour.
The 11th hour that people get really involved and, and I don't, I don't know if there's any way around that. It's just, but I think we just have to be prepared, that's the way it seems to work, so.
There's a way, we just say we're going to vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, every meeting is a vote.
Yeah. Decide to take away everybody's baron on.
So, at any rate.
But I, I think we need to start that conversation. If.
Prior to adoption of the new.
Well, just to, just to start it, right? So we're not playing catch up when the time comes. If and when, a big if, when that comp plan does get adopted.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other, other angles too. I mean, we've heard, like you've said, we've heard a lot from the community about their displeasure and, you know, all the development. But then we've also heard about affordable housing and jobs. And where is everybody going to, like, if you want to have an office space in this area, good luck. Like it's hard to find a place to, to have an office, because they're, they're all, they're all rented. And so development isn't always a bad thing. It, it fills a need that this community is, is growing and we, we may need. More than a 65 foot structure to handle our very limited amount of commercial space and a very small downtown core. Which is the area to put that kind of stuff. Um, now if there's residential in there and there's condos in it, then that's the unpopular part about it, I believe. So maybe that's the, the part that is a problem, because. Uh, Gunning's Alley, for a long time was the tallest structure in that area and nobody had ever had a problem with that. And, uh, I, I don't know how tall it is, but on the downhill side of it, it's got to be over, it's got to be 50 feet or more. So. I think, I think really our job is to educate ourselves on code and what, the reasons why and, and where. And then, you know, yeah, it's not the whole county, it's not even, it's just a very small part of the city. And also to remind people that, you know, our responsibility is to uphold property rights. Which the owners of commercial property should have the right to maximize the value of their properties. Because that's what commercial property is for, is to generate income and revenue, so. I, I don't agree with having it, you know, down by the library. But in, in that area, I think it, it should be there and it is a scenic area. So where would you want to have a condo? You know, where does it make sense for that kind of stuff to go? So is it? Is it, uh? Is it totally up to us to like dictate the future of Sandpoint because of? You know, some people's unpopular opinion, and I say some people, it may be all, most people. But, um, I mean, I've changed my mind about a lot of things after being, you know, educated on. What, what the code actually means, why, why we came to it, you know, what, what other, um, what changes happened along the way? And, uh, you know, what challenges did that, that bring up? Because. I mean, I think I was. I can't remember how old I was, but, um. You know, when the bank building thing came up, I think it was Ray Miller might have been the mayor. And I think he was for it because, uh, and he knew we would survive it. And, um, I'll have to ask him about it and. But there was a massive pushback against it because of, it was going to change the character of, you know, the, that downtown area. Which if you looked around the downtown area, across the street was a single story, fairly old structure that probably should be condemned. So, you know, and then, but people were upset because of the, what it replaced. Yeah, so it.
Yeah.
It had replaced, you know, the old, uh, Herald's IGA, that was the, that was the problem, so. You know, do we want to?
What that name is there now?
Yeah, it might still be around. And I mean, I, I was one of the people that was sad to see it go, but also on the corner there, there was an old brick building that stood there forever. And I don't ever remember anything being in there and it was falling down. And I can't remember, is anybody here, Wayne, were you here?
I can remember the building, but I just, I don't think there's anything in it.
I can never remember anything in there and nobody ever complained about it being gone. You know, so sometimes this, you know, moving forward. Has some of those, uh, like features of change that people are always going to be uncomfortable with, but. Man, I mean, I love that bank building.
It's beautiful.
It is my bank, so. And it sat kind of, you know, dormant for a while, but, you know, now it's totally full as far as I know. I tried to rent a space in there, I can't get one, so, you know, the need, it filled a big need. And, um, and I think some of these things moving forward, we have to be ready to, not like push back against the community, but. Be, be a source of education of, you know, why would anybody even think of doing something like that in that downtown area? Well, here's why, you know, do I agree with it? Maybe not. But if, if it's legal, allowable and, um. You know, the property owner wants to do it and they can make it look fair and it's safe, why would we say no? So. That's my opinion.
There you go, thanks.
Good work. I think, I mean, ultimately we'll be looking at building heights, we do why? Because we've had this discussion of.
Yep, yeah.
Even in the RS and RM, right? The height allowance is quite a bit more than what structures are being. Have been built at historically or are being built at today.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ben.
We should, uh, probably review some of, uh, quarter lanes, uh. Public issues when they had the discussion about Hagadon and the other buildings down there.
Yeah.
Just to kind of, I mean, they went through the same thing that we're really doing right now.
They have no building height in their downtown.
Whoosh. They got some 500s bodies or something.
They're limited by soil type only.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, commissioners, anything else? Alrighty.
Good meeting.
So then I would like to thank everybody for attending and for their contributions and with no further business, before the commission. This meeting is now adjourned at 7:58.